Meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission to order. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Butchino, absent. Evans, absent. Heisler White. Moody.
Here.
O'Toole.
Here.
Schneider, absent. And Mattamore.
Here.
We have four present and three absent chair.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? No, seeing none. We'll carry on. I'll ask for a motion. And the minutes. Let's do them both.
And the minutes as presented.
There's a second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Ah, citizen comments. Do we have any comments from public, limited to non-agenda items? Are there any online?
Yeah, none online.
Here.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, we will carry on. And planning commission staff and reports. Who's taking it tonight? Philip?
Houseman's?
Yes.
Honorable Chair, good evening, members of the commission. It's an honor tonight to recognize two individuals, one of which sits with you all on this commission, whose dedication and integrity have made a lasting impact on the Laramie community. Mr. Byrne Hinckley and Chris Moody were this year's recipients of the Western Planner Citizen Planner Award. So let's give them a round of applause. So I just want to mention that this Western Planner organization is made up of thirteen states. So it is a quite a prestigious award to be handed out. And as many of you already know, Byrne and Chris have worked tirelessly to safeguard one of Laramie's most critical resources, the Casper Aquifer, which provides drinking water to all of us. And through their leadership in Aqua, the Albany County Clean Water Advocates, they brought, they bring science, collaboration, and persistence to the forefront of public decision making. Their efforts have helped shape policies and regulations such as the CAP, the Casper Aquifer Protection Program that now serve as a model for responsible land use and groundwater protection in our community. What's truly remarkable about Byrne and Chris is not just their technical understanding, but their commitment to the process and to the planning process specifically, which requires transparency, public engagement, and respect for the differing perspectives. If it is okay, we did create a small, or they created an acceptance video that was presented at the Western Planner Conference in Bend, Oregon last week or two weeks ago, that if it's okay, we'd like to present this evening to this commission and to the public.
That would be greatly appreciated.
And I want to once again thank Byrne and Chris and offer through you, share them an opportunity to comment after the video as well.
All honors and felicitations to them both. There we go. Nancy, can you turn up the volume?
Yeah, let me see. Let me try this. Sorry.
Really find any ammunition or gas?
John is officially.
All right, I think we're ready.
Excellent. Carry on.
First, long-term resident and I serve on the Laramie. First of all, thank you to all members of the Western Planner for this award. And more importantly, for all the work you do day in and day out of the county, the health communities. We love and hope for a healthy and prosperous future. The land use plan that's the second to this award is Laramie Wyoming's Aquifer Protection Plan. Laramie is the envious position of deriving over half its drinking water supply from aquifer that gives its recharge from largely public well area of fifty square miles immediately east of the city. The protection of that recharge area as a contamination is a point of the protection plan at the older ways only derived from the plant. Throughout this long process, we've both supplied excellent science to plan development. We have been actively bringing that science forward to generate regulations that can withstand legal challenge, and there have been many. And equally important, the public acceptance of the aquifer protection plan. We were both on a steady rotation of field scripts and lectures in the community on the basics of aquifer recharge, development, and protection. Slowly, inch by inch, aquifer protection has moved from a fringe idea promoted by a bunch of environmentalists to a widely accepted community priority. Instead of running against government regulation, most city council and county commissioner candidates now strongly support the son of the aquifer and their dedication to its protection. It's a long haul. Also, the first developed protection plan as consultant for the sale thirty years ago. That was just the first step defining the relevant land area. But most all of them realized outside of the city, which means it's been largely a county to protect it. Like in a lot of places throughout the West, city and county governments don't always get along. And these are not for protection for what I mean, as they have been flawed considerably for the years. For a while, there was no joint plan. Little counties lived with the city, and there were two different plans. Elections come and go. Two years ago, they got back together to create a single joint plan. At that point, Bruce was chair of the Laramie Planning and so commission. And I was chair of the Albany County Planning and so commissions. That helped bring the two governments together and to ensure a solid scientific basis for the plan. Because we are both licensed professional geologists specializing in groundwater resources. One of the story, second was that good planning takes time. Public opinion and elected officials have a flow with good ideas and dear. Secondly, maintain a solid foundation in science and facts. Speak to people in terms they can understand and you will build constituency for good planning.
Well done.
He's attacking me.
Yeah.
Bird wrote it all.
Yeah. Bill.
So yeah, thanks again to Byrne and Chris. Well done. Appreciate your involvement. One other announcement that I have, and then Emma has one as well, is Mr. Evans, as you well know, this is his last planning commission meeting. Obviously, he's absent, but we just want to thank him for his service. If you see him for his term on planning commission as well, he did not reapply. So we are, it's an announcement to the public, really, we are accepting applications currently for that vacancy on the commission. But that's my other announcement, and Emma has one.
Nancy?
Good afternoon, almost evening, honorable chair and planning commission. So tonight, we got a lot of things to celebrate. I'm pleased to report that the city of Laramie has been awarded the Charging Smart Silver Designation, becoming the first community in Wyoming to earn this national recognition of over sixty other communities. And this follows through on City Council's 2024 Letter of Authorization to participate in the Charging Smart Program, very similar to the Soul Smart Program, that we received also a silver designation for a couple of years ago relating to solar energy, whereas Charging Smart relates to EV charging policies within the city. And so through this process, we refined existing zoning standards that already aligned with national best practice, used the municipal fleet analysis prepared by John Wagner, senior fleet technician, and launched a new city webpage highlighting expertise, charger locations, permitting processes, and regional incentives primarily offered through Rocky Mountain Power. So just happy to, happy to report that we've joined the ranks of some other awesome communities in that. Thank you all.
And we're at the charging stations in town, across the highway.
Yeah.
At the firehouse number three, there's one.
Yeah, chair through you. So there's one in the downtown Bison Lot. Then there's the one by fire station number three. There's also one by the Fairfield. I believe that's the fastest charging. But if you go to the new city website, we actually implanted the map of all the chargers that have been reported by users in the community. So if you just look up city of Laramie EV charging, that should take you there, and that has the full list.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you. So I'd like to take the opportunity to.
Turn on your mic.
To just update what, where we are in the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan and various things, and let Byrne speak to the county and the, and city, city programs. I know that on the city side, we've done an ordinance update, right? And I don't believe that there's, are there any more updates to that ordinance, Derek? In the.
Yeah, Chair and Commission, I mean, very, very briefly, I mean, we do, where we're at right now is we've completed an ordinance update as well as a boundary line change. So the zoning map change that was recommended through the plan, that was coordinated with the Albany's, Albany County's changes as well. So minus some minor language changes, just because there's different terms used in the city and the county, essentially similar rules were adopted, which is good. And then a large part of the implementation out of the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan kind of moving forward is centered in our, with Ben Levine and our, and our waste, and our, god, environmental, what is his actual title, environmental?
Ben is that natural resource.
That's right, Natural Resources Program Administrator. And so, you know, through his work, I know that they're looking at some different improvements at some of the wellheads and some of our wellfields, fencing, some different things like that. I, I can't give you like the best overview right now, but that'd be something, you know, maybe if, if we wanted an update on that, would be coordinating with Ben and getting an opportunity for him to maybe provide an update if that was something you guys desired as a planning commission, so.
And then another thing going on is, is the, the Monitor Well Program, which is always a high priority recommendation in the, in the protection plans. And, and the consultant is on, onboard to create a draft for that, that program.
Yes.
Development. So that's, that's moving forward.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Byrne, can you give us a little county?
Yeah, I, I wasn't really prepared to do that tonight. I was interested in what was going on in the city. But I could say on the county end, the lawsuits continue to swirl. I don't know if you guys have followed it, but at almost every juncture, there's been a, a group of landowners that have sued the county over the ordinances that were, the revisions that derived from the aquifer protection plan in 2021, two, three, right on along. Most recently, the judge has, the judgments have sustained the county's authority to regulate land use across the aquifer, specifically distinguishing between legislative actions of the county commissioners from administrative actions. And that was a fine point that's been argued up one side and down the other. As far as what's going on right now, there are still lawsuits in progress with respect to the wastewater regulations. So at the county, what we did there in terms of septic tank regulation was move them out of the land use plan, Casper Aquifer Protection Plan, and move them over into more obviously enforceable water wastewater regulations. So right now, the rules in the county are that any new septic systems within the Casper Aquifer Protection Overlay have to be brought up to an enhanced standard with respect to their impact on groundwater quality. And that is new, and I say that is under challenge. But it's clearly where the science is going, and it's been gratifying that, that as one moves the regulation forward, the industry, I think, has caught up with that. Initially, there was this sense of, oh, we can't do that. Nobody's ever done anything like that before. This is this craziness. But once the regulations move forward, then, then those in the industry look around and they talk to their suppliers. Eventually, they come up with the technology that they claimed was impossible. And so we're now getting, seeing in the suppliers of septic system, treatment systems in the county, rising to challenge, and a number of suppliers are doing those. We're starting to see those installed. So that's a very low-grade kind of drip by drip, death by a ten thousand paper cuts kind of aspect of aquifer quality on the aquifer. But, but we are, we in the county are moving forward with that. The other tangentially related is, of course, the Laramie Area Growth Plan, which has not been most popular with the current county commissioners. But on the county side, there are still, those issues are there, that land use plan was approved by the county. And, and we are taking that into account as we proceed with zoning decisions as, as they come forward to the county without the need for a specific intergovernmental agreement with, with the city. So just for those who have followed the Laramie Area Growth Plan, I think it's reassuring that elements of it are moving slowly forward at the county level, independent of a formal relationship with the city, which is where that was originally intended to go. So there's kind of a off-the-cuff, what's going on with the aquifer in the county. I think we're in a good place, holding the line. And, and if that continues to sustain politically and legally, I think, I think we're in good shape.
Great.
Thank you, Byrne.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
And I just like to emphasize how important the county end of this is because.
Well, we, we went over that point. We beat it to death.
Yeah.
The county's carrying the freight.
Exactly.
On most of this, you know, and the growth plan as well. All right, ah, let's see, I think we're going to go to, let's just skip right through to item seven, long-range planning projects. Anything from staff?
Chair.
Yeah.
Sorry, just for order. Did we have any disclosures?
We gotta do disclosures. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Glad you caught me up. All right, any disclosures, ex parte communications, or conflicts of interest? No, hearing none, I think we can, we're fine. We could carry on. No new long-range planning projects? All right, let's go to seven, eight, Third Street Beautification Project. Derek, take it away.
Chair, Commission, tonight, we've got an item here, a short presentation by our, some consultants that are working with the city. So we have Laura Hadad and Tom Druigan on there in the audience. And they will come up here and provide a short presentation related to Third Street Beautification. For those of you, I think, that are, been in these meetings, we've mentioned some of the different meetings that we had throughout the summer related to the Third Street Beautification Project. And as you see, there is a new beautiful road out there that is almost done, and we don't have to dodge construction cones anymore. Along with that beautification, you're seeing, if you have not noticed, some new black lights going in along the corridor, the Third Street Corridor. We will also see some new trash cans and some, some essentially street furniture going in, all matching. But as you recall, as part of the project that we have in the broader Third Street Beautification is the incorporation of art into the corridor. What was noted early on during some of the project scoping that art brings in an added component to not only color, attraction, pedestrian orientation, but also can signify that you're arriving somewhere special. And so what, as part of the Third Street Beautification Project, we sought out artists, the two of which we have selected and here will be presenting to you, to, to help us understand what art might look like on this corridor. It's broken up into some different phases for this project. Right now, we're just in this kind of like research and site review inspection of the site. They've met with some of our key partners, Laramie Public Art Coalition, YDOT. They're doing a, a meeting tonight also after this, the art museum. They're meeting with you all as a planning commission, as well as the city council. And just kind of touring the spaces within Laramie that have art to try to understand what does the art scene look like here, so that they can bring some of that flavor to our community along that Third Street Corridor. And so today, today is a, is a very brief, no-action item. I think our consultants are maybe just desiring a little bit of feedback either today. Or if you want to sit on it and send us some comments, we'll get it to the artists later. Just a little bit about maybe what you think or envision maybe art along that Third Street Corridor might look like. The city is looking at trying to lease property or find spaces, maybe on private property even, along the Third Street Corridor that could create larger gateway spaces versus just using the limited right-of-way that we have along Third Street. And so really with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to Laura and Tom to just kind of go over, like I said, a short presentation. I think they're going to show you a little bit of their art. And, you know, right now, we're in a fact-finding. Really, this is kind of a, just an opportunity for planning commission to provide some general input and start guiding the process. And so appreciate it. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask Tom and Laura or me or any of us. So we'll turn it over to them.
Could you just state your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm Tom Druigan.
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura Hadad.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us, honorable chair and commissioners. Like Derek said, we're, we're here to kind of share with you some of our artwork. And really, our goal is to kind of, this is our first time to Laramie. We're from Seattle, Washington, and so we're just kind of absorbing as much as we can about the community, the place, the history, et cetera. And on that, let Laura kick it up.
Yeah, so we've been collaborating on public art for over twenty years. We do art planning and site-specific work. And I was previously a member of the Seattle Design Commission, so I really appreciate what you guys are doing and look forward to your comments because we know that you all really understand the city a lot better than we do. Is this the advance to the right? Okay. So I'm going to start just with a quick overview and then talk about a couple of projects. And then Tom will talk about some of our research. So, but here we go. So the main focus of our art practice is placemaking, primarily through the creation of large-scale iconic artworks that can become identifiers for the places where they're located. We incorporate lighting into our work when it's appropriate. And with this, we generate additional conceptual effects through lighting and other means. We're striving to create art experiences that have a bit of magic in them to capture the public's imagination and offer new understandings and interpretations of place. The concepts that we form often layer together several inspirations and ideas about a site that we learn from processes of research and community engagement. Our inspirations can be cultural, social, natural, scientific, or functional, depending on the site. And we filter this inspiration through our own aesthetic lens of form, color, and light, and convey the concepts that we're, we're telling through storytelling in which we're trying to reveal often invisible aspects of a place. So we work spatially, sometimes using sculptural forms to compose immersive places for people to gather. The art can be an unexpected intervention or do sometimes unexpected things in certain weather conditions. When possible, we activate the forms and materials through natural phenomena such as sunlight, solar alignments, plants, wildlife, wind, and water. So the art can be a barometer of its environment. In many ways, our art is experimental. We build a lot of prototypes and we test hypotheses. We set up sculptures with conditions and constants on which nature can enact different reactions. But layered into this is a sense of humanity and storytelling and a lens into the universal realms. So we're going to just show quickly two very different sculptures. One is called Sun Spot. This is a sculpture at the Denver Animal Shelter. And so this is an icon, a figurative sculpture, obviously, of a dog. As we were working on coming up with concepts, we thought creating an icon that attracted people to the animal shelter would be appropriate. You can see this sculpture from I-25 as you're driving by, so it kind of beckons you in. And then the sculpture is actually covered with ninety thousand stainless steel pet tags. So as you get closer, you kind of see this level of detail. It captures sunlight and wind. Underneath the text there, there's two little dogs sitting on a bench, so it's a photo op. We've created a little bench for people to, to take pictures and sit and be in this place. See. Oh, oh, okay. So, so we picked the pet tag because it is a symbol of adoption. It's a symbol of care, and we wanted to convey that through the sculpture. The sculpture is also on the South Platte River, and the way sunlight is reacting on the sculpture, we thought was similar to the environmental effects of sunlight on the river. So kind of making an association there. The reflectivity of these pieces is, creates this kind of environmental phenomena and kind of bringing things in. Oops. So we work with fabricators a lot, and, and this was, piece was made in Denver. They, we built, first we made a maquette, then the fabricator has translated it into a steel frame and then spent weeks covering it in the pet tags. It was delivered to the site in two parts and installed. So we spent a lot of time planning out the installation, how we're going to get the sculpture to the site. And then ideally, you know, it's a piece that people want to interact with and be with and have a relationship with, and that's very much the case with Sun Spot. The sculpture is illuminated at night in colors that go through sunset colors. Um, and then inside the shelter is a suspended piece that is a collar that fits the big dog and, um, and people who I'm not sure what's going on here, but people, people, um, are, are invited to, um, to engrave pet tags with the names of their pets and becomes kind of a community collar that is becoming more encrusted with these tags over time. Um, and then out along the river, we have pet tags naming the native plants that are there. So making this association with the environment and the sculpture. So always trying to, using art to bring, um, bigger, I guess, um, relationships with the place, um, to the artwork itself. This is our most recent sculpture installation. This is our, our largest piece ever. It's sixty feet tall. It's in Philadelphia on the Delaware River. So here, we're using a large sculpture to convey, um, well, to create this icon, this sort of lighthouse, um, beacon that draws people to the river. But the portion that has the cables is mimicking the actual depth of the river, um, next to it. So here are some of the inspiration and research images we, we used. So the map in the upper left is circling a section of the river that we wanted to convey the depth of. And we're using elements called lead lines, which are historic depth-finding, um, apparatus that you would throw in the water. A lead would sink to the bottom and then you would mark the depth of the water on the rope. So each cable in the sculpture is an individual lead line that is, um, conveying the depth. So, um, so this piece sets, sits in a new development. Um, what we really like about it is it changes so much depending on the light condition. So here, these polycarbonate blue discs are, um, are glowing in sunlight. So these discs are affixed to the, uh, cables. There are almost three thousand discs in five colors. Um, and then at the bases are these reflective sounding weights that, um, that are marking the depth of the water. And then down at the base of the sculpture, um, similar to the pet tags in a way, it's like as you get closer, you see there's this other level of detail. So here we have these pieces we're calling pile pipes and they are each etched with an, an image that is related to navigating the river. One of them has the map that has the depths of water on it that is conveyed in the sculpture. So, and then there's a plaque that kind of describes this. So people can start to piece together what it's all about. So some of the, the pile pipes have the phases of the moon, the depths of the water, and then one of these lead lines on them. So as you get closer, um, you can look up into the sculpture and then see it from a different vantage. So again, trying to create these different experiences of the same sculpture. And then at night, it is illuminated with lights in the top of the piece that, um, really bring it to life and activate it. And, um, of course, it's no contest to the Benjamin Franklin Bridge in background, but but it is a nice, um, beacon. Um, and then the lights will change colors depending on the event. So for patriotic events, we are red, white, and blue light. So, um, using lights to convey seasonal effects and celebrations and, um, of course, sports in the case of Philly. So, um, so I am gonna turn it over to Tom to talk a little bit about, um, what we're doing here in Laramie.
Yeah, so this is just some of our initial findings, kind of our armchair research, um, that we put together just based on researching, uh, Laramie and and I think, uh, we were just really fascinated by a lot of it. And now that we're here, we're kind of absorbing more. We've done some touring around, uh, this morning and as Derek mentioned, some meetings. So, um, we're, we're really here on fact-finding mission. So, um, so of course, uh, one thing we're struck by, which is really amazing, coming from the Northwest, is just the open skies and grassy plains and uh, how the sky is just constantly changing. So we could, you know, start to think of that as an inspiration for the artwork, thinking about how how the artwork could kind of, uh, change in these ways. Of course, out farther out from Laramie, we heard a lot about, um, how much people love the outdoors here and we can understand why, seeing all the different, uh, rock formations and mountains and, of course, the rivers. Through here. And then, of course, one thing we haven't checked out yet, but, uh, we're gonna go look at the, the museum and, um, kind of explore, uh, this, uh, kind of, uh, older, uh, history of the area, the fossils and the dinosaur fossils. And try to understand that. And then looking at the, the city itself and how it kind of evolved and changed over time and trying to understand that. So really, we're almost looking for like the DNA of the city and the DNA of the culture, um, when we come to a place and those as hopefully you saw from some of our work, that really starts to inform what the artwork is. So those early nineteenth-century photos and just seeing, uh, one thing we were struck by is how much of the, the uh, old part of town is just completely intact. And it's really wonderful how it's all just, it seems to be thriving, uh, restaurants, bars, and, and, uh, stores still today. So that's pretty exciting to see. Um, a lot of communities don't have that kind of asset. So that's pretty wonderful. Uh, we went over to the, the depot, the museum, and we talked to the proprietor there. Pretty interesting, learning more about the history of trains. And of course, uh, we, we have read that, uh, and we're told today that the Union Pacific really got the town started as a, as a train stop. Um, we were totally enamored by this, uh, snowplow train. We've never seen anything like that before. So uh, exciting part of the history here. Um, and then, of course, the, uh, the ranches and this history, which is maybe more known, uh, with the, the ranches and the cowboys and that whole part of the history. Uh, also, uh, we read about the, the boom of the cattle industry in the, uh, nineteenth century and but how that still is part of the, part of the culture here today on the outlying areas. Of course, local heroes and more local villains, you know, colorful history there, uh, with the different characters, uh, who, from, uh, Laramie, the first woman voter by forty or fifty years, a pretty amazing story. And, oops. And then, uh, looking at kind of more recent history, the, you know, the old signage and the old lighting and kind of the old remnants, uh, from the, you know, forties, fifties, uh, that part of the culture. We don't know how this will inform anything, but kind of interesting thinking about the streetscape and and how an artwork along Third, you know, might kind of announce a certain presence, a certain identity. Um, and then, of course, uh, going around and touring today, uh, the different murals in town and other artworks. We kind of love to see, love to see other art. And so we can be informed by this and think about art that's complementary to, uh, what already exists in a place. Um, and then, of course, trying to understand the, uh, the culture now. And of course, these big event days, we heard how the, how the, uh, city embraces these big events, the Jubilee Days, and then, of course, the farmer markets in the summer. And the rodeos. And then of, of, we saw this, uh, there was just a music festival, the Snow Train Music Festival here. So interesting to see how the, the, the community comes together in these, uh, celebrations. Um, and then, of course, we're heading there tonight to do a public event. So we haven't been there yet, but it looks pretty fascinating, the Cultural Center, our museum. And then, of course, these big events, we heard just on Saturday, I think, uh, there was a football game and the whole, the whole city transforms when you have these big events. So interesting to think about how there's an artwork could kind of, uh, reach out to people at these different times, whether it's, you know, a quiet Monday morning or a super crazy, uh, weekend game day. So something we'll keep in mind. So, um, right now, so we do, we had a meeting just a few hours ago at YDOT, talking about opportunities. We're, we're looking, there's a possibility, uh, of the artwork, maybe, uh, working out some agreements with the different property owners at two locations, uh, on the north and south of Third. Or possibly, uh, in the, in the, uh, YDOT, um, right away. So those are things we're just exploring now too. But if you guys have any insight, as planners, you probably have a much better insight into the, the streetscape than, than we did. So yeah, should I, should I talk about what we're gonna do tonight or just wait? Yeah.
Well.
We're, yeah. So we're gonna do, we're gonna do a couple of creative questions tonight with the public and try and get more of this dialogue about what does, what does Laramie mean to you? So we're gonna run through a couple of questions with them after our presentation tonight. So.
But, well, the first question is, um, what is something unique, fascinating that we might not know about? You know, what are some, what are the hidden stories here that the art might reveal? The second question is to imagine yourself, um, driving into Laramie. It's a beautiful sunny day. Your windows are down. And, um, a song comes on the radio. Like, what's the, what's the song that you envision? What's like, uh, I guess?
Your personal soundtrack?
Your personal soundtrack to downtown Laramie. So we would be open to hearing your, your, your thoughts on either of those questions or, you know, just in general, what can this project, um, bring to Laramie? And, you know, how can art be a part of that?
Got any ideas, guys? Go ahead, Donald.
Have you guys gone out to Vedavu? Do you know where Vedavu is?
We've heard about it.
That's the, the hoodoo rock formations? Yeah, we haven't seen it yet, but yeah.
And they're very unusual and very striking. And they're, you know, they're streaked with, what streaks them? Is that a lichen that streaks them? You know, the, the vertical strikes where water runs?
That's usually just like, uh, a reaction with the minerals from the water, the so iron and.
So just walk around. I mean, that's, that's our local artwork. This is an artwork star of town. Maybe ten, fifteen years ago, we had some folks come onto campus with some astonishing ideas. And they showed us what was possible on campus. And this is a pretty conservative community. And you might want to go to the north side of the courthouse. Where there's an art installation and there was murder about the installation. I don't know if folks remember that. And it's a nice installation and so on. And the other thing I'd mention is, uh, critters are always a big hit. But we have an infestation of cowboys on horses. I just, I saw to my horror that, uh, the university have put yet another statue of a man on a horse.
Okay.
And if there's, uh, if there's anything you do, please don't worsen the infestation. We, we we know there's a cowboy culture here, but there's a strong Hispanic culture here. And, uh, obviously, Union Pacific played an important role. But, uh, we also are one of the only places with Wyoming toads. You know what Wyoming toads are?
Oh.
So we have an endangered Wyoming toad.
Okay.
In some ponds in the Laramie Basin. So, I mean, they're spectacularly ugly, beautiful toads. So, um, also the work on restoring black-footed ferrets was done here. It was initially started here and this is where some of the original colony was. And those animals have been reintroduced into the wild.
Is that a native?
Uh, they're, they were, the last pre-ranging, uh, black-footed ferrets were, uh, we thought they were extinct. And then they were recognized i- in the area Matitzi, which is the northwest part of the state. But the work to restore them was done both here and in Cheyenne. And it's, it's now being federalized and the feds are involved. But, uh, I see precious few reminders of, uh, some of our native species, which are under threat. So, uh, the lovely, ugly, beautiful, uh, Wyoming toad and the gorgeous black-footed ferret.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great.
Here and, here and at the left.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was pretty good.
I, I, I think you hit it with the open, the open sky and, and just the, the space is very, very important to me.
Yeah.
Some chuhuli would be really great. I'd enjoy some.
Well, the color and the luminosity.
Yeah.
So, you know, Laramie is very stuck, in my opinion, stuck in the past. Donald kind of alluded to that, of the cowboy thing and
Right.
and, and the knee-jerk, um, art installation is either W-focused or, um, cowboy-focused in the past. And so whether this place can really be looking forward into the future, what, what, which will be a kind of harder thing to, to articulate, um, with, what it is about the future that Laramie is trying to, to develop, whether it's recreational awareness like Vedavu and, and Pilot Hill, Snowy's, and just what a low, a low population, open area with surroundings and not a lot of people offers to the world, um, that's especially going with, with I-80. I mean, what's, what's weird about Laramie is it's on this, the, the major east-west thoroughfare. And it really hasn't changed a whole heck of a lot despite all this quote tourist potential and Laramie really hasn't, in my opinion, been able to capture that, you know, stop and see what Laramie has to say. I'm sort of talking here. But, uh.
Well, I think the art hopes to help with that, you know? Capture the passersby and make people curious.
How many locations are, are, are you committed to doing a number of locations?
It's, it's pretty open now, but I think the, the goal was gonna do to bookend the, the two ends of downtown, uh, Sheridan and Thursday. Third area and then Third and, um,
Park.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's the goal, but we're, you know, we're exploring. So if, if some, you know, as we start working on it, if we realize some other site has amazing potential, then it seems like there might be some openness to that too. So, yeah.
Incredible art, that thing that you're trying to do with interacting with the environment, because it's really exciting. So, yeah, I, I
Okay.
getting some input, uh, later when you've had a chance to really
Yeah.
throw down to what
Yeah, it seems like there's incredible potential here with sunlight and wind and sky that you know, just thinking out loud, but yeah.
Well, having owned numerous horses for most of my life, I've seen enough of them myself. Most from the front and the back. And I think would would be, I would, might be something to avoid, but not totally ignore. But I think my feeling about Laramie is I've been to a lot of downtowns along I-80, I-40, I-25. I think Laramie has the most active and original downtown that I've seen in anywhere at least west of the Mississippi. And I think that might be something that might draw a little bit of focus. It really is, uh, you know, it's pretty old school and there's some really there's some, there's one building I think of where the, uh, cast iron work on the front on the glass wall came from Brooklyn, New York in about eighteen ninety. And most people where the gunsmith is on Iverson. That building came out of Brooklyn, New York in a cast iron factory in eighteen ninety. And you look at, get up there and look at it. Don't see it much because it's got three quarters of an inch of paint on it, but they had some really interesting stuff back then. And, and, you know, that's to me what Laramie's all about, that and why it opens.
Yeah.
The, the, the other thing is that Laramie is, is, is very much a university town, so to speak, but where you know, I'm kind of curious what the push-pull will be between UW's, what, what they, what they'd like to put out versus Laramie as a, as a community, you know, whether they can be melded or whether it's a, it's a, it's, it's a, you know, city thing and UW does its own thing and they got their own funding and their own sculptures on campus and, and, uh, they're very much in, in their, in their box. Yeah, again, I'm just talking as to what the, what the dynamic might, might be, whether it's a city thing or a city and UW thing.
Yeah, but just my personal preference. I like Chris's comment. We need to. Just my personal preference. I like Chris's comment. We need to have something that looks forward.
Yeah.
And more than looking back, although I love looking back and I enjoy it, and I think it ought to be. Somewhere involved in it, but I think we also need to see how this is gonna, how we take this that we have. And project it forward. And so it's, it may be old, but it's looking.
Right.
Towards the front. It's looking towards moving on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, um, the territorial park was, was seen as, as the thing to bring people off of I-80 into that. You know, Butch Cassidy hung out here and, and I don't think it's worked.
Okay.
It, it, the territorial park is.
It didn't have a septic pumping station. I doubt anybody pull off the road to go there. I hate to be sold. Having spent a lot of time when I first moved to town out there, trying to help work that out.
Yeah. So yeah, you may, you may get, you know, people that, that really want that, that old western flavor. But boy, it sure, it sure didn't take, in my opinion, with territorial park. And I'd hate to see the same mistake. Made again, trying to look forward rather than, than back. There's plenty of back in this town.
Well, it was interesting today at the railroad depot, hearing about the history of some of the steam locomotives. Because they look so, I mean, they are so historic, but hearing about how innovative they were for their time. It was, it made it so much more fascinating, you know? And so I think there's a lot of innovation constantly happening. That is a part of history. And so what is like, what's the, I mean, maybe the, the aquifer, you know, like, like what's the innovation of today? Like.
Yeah, I, I, I can't, I always think in, in those terms. I mean, what was kind of the, 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 the story? You know, is that the steam locomotives needed water and there was the river and there were springs here that provided water. And so that, that everything sort of goes around, around water in the arid west, which we are high desert. So steam locomotives needed water every hundred miles. Laramie, Rawlins, Rock Springs, they all had springs and bingo, that was, that was great. And then, then the, the, the story as to, or, you know, one thing, the, the city springs are. You know, so many a hundred and twenty-five feet higher in elevation here, and they provided water pressure as, with a pipe. Here downtown that provided thirty or forty PSI. And that, you know, sort of provided that water source for developing. And then as you engineered storage tanks and stuff, the, the town could, would migrate to the east.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's a water story, but, but, you know, I, I, I don't know. Yeah. I mean.
You're a geologist.
Water's kind of, you know, the, the water is visible in Laramie River and it's invisible in the aquifer. But, but water is certainly in a place like Laramie and the arid west is, is a lifeblood of any community. But whether it's the story we're telling in, at two sites to get people's imagination going is debatable. I don't know.
Listen for, I mean, I feel like it's being talked about is that juxtaposition, whether it's old versus new.
No, honesty, when you're asking a question about like driving down the street, I, I couldn't think of a soundtrack, but I did chuckle because I could think of like snow pelting me in the face. But yet, you know, thinking about a rock face, right? It's this like just absolutely nothing there, right? Rock, but yet you have little plants sprouting out of it. And I think the, the aridity of the desert, but then the moisture. So like these kind of opposites or how they interact with each other. I don't know. If you listen and hear people talk about them and then find a way somehow to blend them. I think there's a lot to be said for.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things, because they are, even though they're like sort of opposites, they're important. I don't know if it's yin yang. I don't know. I'm not an artist either. But something like that, I think you'll probably hear people talk about those kinds of things.
Okay.
Yeah, that is interesting.
So whether each sculpture is different or you blend it in one, but.
Yeah.
You'll hear that theme. And hopefully you can creatively find a way to blend those kinds of things together.
Could you have one that like each, since you're bookending, trying to bookend a town, whether the two pieces sort of relate to one or, or move. They're, they, they start the story and the other one ends it or vice versa.
Or bidirectional story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As, as opposed to just, just two installations that are completely different.
No, they'll be related in some way. So we haven't really, I love these ideas to start thinking about like, yeah, the, the. Two ends of the story or the two sides of the story. I don't know. Like I think could be interesting.
The yin and the yang.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don. I don't know if, well, you're gonna be here tomorrow. We're gonna have a really cold day tomorrow. You know that? And it's kind of the real start of winter, but we've a lot of wind here. I don't know if you thought of wind sculpture.
Yeah.
Something along those lines. The other thing I wondered about is we're at a pretty high elevation, seven thousand one hundred feet. And UV light is pretty intense. I don't know whether artistically, anything can be done with UV light on a artwork. To, that would be unusual. In other words, we, we have some resources here that are not saying, they're not always, that cursed as resources. But we have a lot of wind, we have a lot of UV light. And I don't know if something could be done with those.
Yeah.
And winters are long and hard. So the sculpture would have to be, I was just thinking if we had the dog thing here. I was just thinking ten years, it'll last ten years in Laramie. So it just has to be, it has to be pretty robust. And if you saw the, the moose outside.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's gonna last a long time. I'm not sure how well the colors are gonna preserve, but. The robustness is gonna be an issue.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Maybe it's the way you could put that to work, especially if it's a wind, you know, not windy.
We did do that. One sculpture up in Calgary, we were kind of in a remote area of Calgary, a high point in Calgary. And had those extreme conditions and did these sculptures that, well, one kind of near wetlands is like a line of birds and they're all wind veins. And so they, when the wind's strong, they all line up perfectly. It's pretty cool. And then the one up on the hill, one thing we weren't quite expecting is it completely, in the winter, it can get completely covered in like frost. And snow from blowing like ice and snow is, creates a whole nother view of the artwork. So, yeah.
The other thing. That just popped into my head. I had three deer on Eleventh Street in front of my house this morning. Right? They come down off of W Hill. You go up on the, on the east side, up by, behind Walmart. And there's a herd of antelope that live right behind Walmart. And they graze. You go to the golf course and I think it's a two-stroke penalty when you hit an antelope. I'm not a golfer, but I think that's the rules. But, you know. We have. Uh, I've seen. Just about every kind of critter you could think of, foxes, we, until a distemper got most of them. But there were foxes living in La Bonni Park. We get pelicans fly into La Bonni every summer. We have pelicans flying. We have seagulls. We have just about every kind of critter. We've had mountain lions come down to town. I haven't had a bear in a long time, but, you know.
Saw a bear go by my back fence. And then it, and then it bumped up to a colleague here to be bang. And it was a bear. It must've been, I don't know what the hell the bear was doing in town. There's a lot of wildlife in town. And the migratory pelicans, American white pelicans come through in a very predictable basis. Sometimes we're fortunate to see them in some of the local parks. So, and there's, there's a big love for animals, just, and the outdoor animals and so on are a big part of people's lives. But if a creative use rather than just a sculpture of an elk, I mean.
Right.
If something a little bit more creative could be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I remember sculpture in Southern California where you came at it from one direction, the, it, it, it created something. In the CSUN, and we came out from a different direction.
Yeah.
And eventually did the same. I mean, so, so you have something in an intersection with some traffic that, that each going each way. It sort of does something different.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Virgins, virgins get to say something or do something very specific. It might be the same or the, or different than coming from the other way.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a great point too, because, yeah, because gateways are, they're both coming in going. And so you're, you know, it's like you're experiencing them from both sides, both directions, you know, even if one's on this side of the street, one's on the other, you're still.
One thing that I think you need to bear in mind, it's an automobile centric community. And we do have a lot of, you know, foot traffic downtown, but that's because they find a place to park and then walk around because you can't. It's hard to find a place to park. And so I think whatever you put on a gateway should be something that can be. Plainly obvious, the message you try, it's trying to deliver. In a short attention span, you know, not glaringly obvious, but you know, a little more subtle, but something that. Gets the guy driving down. I, Third Street gets a lot of traffic during bike week. Up in Sturgis before and after. And we pull a lot of people in for that. But. I think, you know, just, just to bear that in mind, that if you got a gateway at each end, that it is automobile centric. So it might want to get somebody's attention right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, we always like to create sculpture that, yeah, you can see it from a distance and you have that experience, but it rewards the pedestrian in some way. By revealing, you know, the smaller details. So definitely think about that.
You'll see two deciderators. UP.
Oh, yeah, we did.
And that actually is an I-80, I-80, you drive an I-80, you can see these, these. Being UP to do anything, you know, is tragically difficult. But, you know, that would, that would just be a landmark for travelers.
We, we saw that one today. We were thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they're just abandoned.
Well, they're not abandoned, but they're too expensive to tear down.
Do something that isn't obscene anyway. So.
Yeah.
As best you can.
Yeah.
That's fascinating.
Probably not your, your deal. It's just a, it's just a comment on, on artistic.
Bring that up.
Opportunities in Laramie, which is a opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what people would see from the highway.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be like a different level of landmark, but we love that idea. So, yeah.
Well, if you think of anything else, you know, we're gonna be working on this for a while and great, amazing comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
What is the time then?
Um.
That is a good question.
I don't, I think we, we have some time to come up with the concepts. I think we've got a few months, although architects are working. We're gonna try to sync up with them a little bit.
Right, right. So, yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna do some concepts and kind of vet those and then probably get a preferred concept. And, you know, I think, I think we're shooting towards. Sometime in the winter for that. And so we, we can kind of move into the next phases after that. So.
Yeah, well. Budget? I mean, there's a very delicate question, but what are we talking about money wise? And I assume the city's paying for this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But just ballpark. I mean, just ballpark.
I think it was, I think it was.
A few hundred thousand?
Yeah, I think, I want to say like around three hundred thousand, but there may be some additional funds. So, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much, yeah.
Glasses, I believe. Ah, we have no other business tonight. Anything else from staff? Well, the chair will entertain a motion. Is there a second? All those in favor? Put your hat on and go.
Thank you very much.